Belle Fountain City Council is now in session for purposes of two special hearings. The first hearing to occur at 6:30 PM, the second hearing to occur at 6:45 PM. The first hearing is to consider and how we'll handle this, folks, is we'll start the first hearing, conclude the first hearing, then start the second hearing. Two different issues. The first hearing is to consider a zoning request by Jeremy Lavine Investments that approximately forty-six acre tract be annexed to the city of Belle Fountain and re-zoned R3 multifamily residence district located at west of eleven hundred to fifteen hundred block of Ludlow Road, south of East Lake Avenue, and east of Michigan Street. The property is currently zoned R1. The recommendation of the planning commission is to zone the property R1. So if there's anybody here who, before we get started too, if anybody's wearing any head coverings, please take those off pursuant to Belle Fountain Safety Code regulations. If there's anybody here who wishes to speak on that, there's a lot of people in the audience. I know we're here for two different meetings. Please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the chair will recognize you to speak. I don't know how many people are going to be here to speak on the issue. We have fifteen minutes, folks, so if there's going to be quite a few people speaking, keep your comments brief if you can. I will conclude the meeting at six forty-three, okay? Six forty-three. All right, thank you.
I'd like to be also opposed to the
Name is, uh, your address?
Fifteen thirty County Road one.
I'm sorry, bye. Let me, please.
Can we stop with, I mean, I'm on the microphone.
No, there's no microphone. There never has been.
Oh, okay.
State your name.
Chris Baker.
Chris Baker. Make sure to speak up so we can hear you, Chris. What's your address?
Fifteen thirty County Road one.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I would say there's a few points for my opposition. First off, anybody on their way here to take Lubbock? It's flooded right now. Our infrastructure can't handle it. And we're talking, how many families? Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds are being added. We're also talking property values with two-hundred-and-sixty apartments, if that's still the case.
This is proposed to be zoned R1, that's not apartments.
Okay, well, R3 is what they're proposing, right?
The planning commission has recommended R1.
Okay, but Lavine is proposing R3? Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, if, okay, so all, what I saw for the meeting today was for two-hundred-and-sixty apartments. Whether that's true or not, either way, we're in opposition of mass housing right here. First off, low-income mass housing like that is going to deplete our property values like crazy. First off, you can't put a crime correlation directly to that. You have to put what is Belle Fountain offer and what type of people are going to be brought here. That's where the data is driven towards. And when you look at everything being said, crime is inevitable. But also, you're talking nine-eleven calls rise twelve to fifteen percent. All of the infrastructure upgrades, who's going to end up paying for those in the long run? Also, the marriageville situation, all the developments coming in, getting the tax abatement, look at who's not paying for, you know, school taxes? Who's teaching your kids? We're adding hundreds and hundreds of kids. Who's paying for that? Look at what marriageville's going through right now. And if that's our best plan is to bring in hundreds of more, you know, in houses, it's just, it's not best for, you know, for us as the residents who are already here. And that's my, thank you.
Go ahead. Mark Barrett, five-nine-seven-nine Dublin Road, Sockshire Estate, I represent, land and, or Lavine Investments on this. We are fine with the recommendation from the planning company of R1, so this will be single-family. If you choose to do anything else with it, we would bring it back through as a PUD, which was the request. But just to address some of the comments that are, that are going to be made here, there are no plans right now for apartments on this site. We are accepting of the R1 designation. Thank you.
Terry Dolan, I live at eleven fifty-six Michigan Street. Even if this is R1, I have some safety concerns with the traffic, amount of traffic that's flowing in. So from what I understand, there's going to be coming out on Michigan Street? Is there going to be another exit on Lake and on Ludlow? Or how, how's that going to work? Because we have no sidewalks. It's already an issue right now without adding, I don't know, three-hundred more cars or whatever's going to be coming down that street. They also have one on the south end of the street. All of that influx is going to come in as well. So that's a big concern on the safety side. So as far as the sidewalks go, I don't know who's responsible to pay for those, but if it's that big of a concern, I would suggest if the city's not paying for it, that whoever's building those structures pay for it. Because they need to make the environment safe. I think the guy's got to come to the other place. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a letter to read from someone that sent me.
They should've come here.
They what? Oh, don't read it?
No.
Oh, okay.
You can send that to the members of council.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Donald Maxwell, eleven fifty-two Michigan Street. And I don't think our, the groundwater is being took care of, or it would just increase the problems that we have to put any more housing through there. I think it should remain just like it is. But we've got problem with groundwater runoff all through there. Thank you.
Roger Ely, Belle Fountain City Schools, eight-twenty Ludlow Road. Our only concern would be a thorough study be done on the traffic. I know we've got driveways off of Lake into the high school property, and then off of Ludlow to our middle school and elementary, and we just want to make sure that where the egress was to that block for any development, that a thorough study be done for traffic so we have the safest path possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Gilroy, twelve ninety County Road one. My question is, are there a little strip there between us and the property behind us? What's the reason for that being annexed into the city? And if it is, then do I have to go to city sewer? Do I have to go to city sewage and water because I'm on my own well, my own septic tank? In addition to that, the activity that's happening across the street, I raised a concern last year to the new city engineer about the dust bowl, and he told me that that would be addressed, and it never was. I see dust bowl year two starting day before yesterday, so I have some concerns about that as well.
Can I add one last thing regarding the You gotta wait until everybody else speaks, sir.
Tom Hensley, one-one-six-one Michigan Street. I think just to re, the biggest concern, I think, for us at that end of the street is obviously the runoff basin, and is that going to be expanded with all of the new housing at the end of Michigan Street and also across the street of Lublow? And is anything else that's going to be done between Michigan and Lublow? So that basin already has overflowed once this year, and we have water in our backyard. So I'm just curious if there's plans to expand that basin with ongoing construction. So, thank you.
Hello, Diane Oliver, one-one-six-one Michigan Street. I am not familiar with the terms of zoning and various other terms. I heard the word PUD mentioned earlier by the gentleman with Mr. Lavine, that the zoning is looking to be and maintain at R1, which is residential housing. We were here at the zoning meeting when there was a proposal to change the zoning to R3, which is apartments, and the, as you mentioned, zoning committee suggested or recommended that it stay R1 for single homes. But if it is a PUD, does that mean it could be changed at any time from an R1 single home lot to an R3 apartments? Would we be facing the same issue again later? That's my question.
Uh, this is just, ma'am, this is a question and answer session. If you want to speak to the engineer about that, or Mr. Dodd's after the meeting, you're more than welcome to. Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Osppaw, I live at eleven seventeen Michigan Street. Our biggest concern is there is roughly, if they were going to put the apartment building in, there would have been six-hundred-and-seventy-one new housing with the development on Ludlow, the development off of Rin Street behind, that runs parallel with Michigan and at the end of Michigan, and then the apartment building. They're saying they're not putting the apartment building in now, so roughly. But we're, we're concerned about all the traffic. You know, that's six-hundred-and-seventy-some houses of cars, one, two-vehicle families, three, you know, they got kids, teenagers. We're just concerned about all the traffic and where all these cars are going to go. The field that's in, that we're talking about right now, there's Morris Drive that comes onto Michigan. All the new housing is going to come down Michigan. We got all the development on Ludlow and Lake, and you've got all the schools and all the children. And like the gentleman earlier said, we have new sidewalks on Michigan. So there's kids now that walk in the street. It's going to be rough. I'm, I'm concerned for the children in our area and, and the people just, you know, going to the park. All the school events that happen and all the cars and buses, that's our big concern, safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, it is six forty-three. I understand there may be some more people in the audience who want to address council on this issue, but we have to move to the second meeting. If you want to address council, you may do so. We are going to have our regular council meeting at seven-thirty tonight, and you'll be permitted to address council about these concerns or any other concerns you may have about zoning or the legislation that's on the agenda tonight, okay? With that, we'll conclude this meeting, and we'll break for two minutes, and we'll start the next meeting. Anybody, is the next meeting at seven-thirty going to be a question and answer? Or is this just more of a purely legislative? Just public comments? Yep. Will there be a new business on like the seven-thirty meeting or even like that?
Just put some, what, tell me if that, that Just be agenda.
Have you just, um, yeah.
It's got to come through council. It's legislation, just like, just like any other legislature, it has to move through council to get to the
Well, I don't know that.
Yeah, I'm just, well, I'm telling you, that's what I say.
Don't worry about it, your guys in Creighton, take care of it.
I'm sorry?
Your guys in Creighton, the overflow of runoff, they haven't addressed the Creighton across my house, my bed's flooded.
You can have comments at the seven-thirty meeting if you want. Belle Fountain City Council is back in session for a special meeting to begin at six forty-five PM to consider the zoning request of Christian Gilliken of Bailey Cavallari LLC, ten West Broad Street, Columbus, representing Hodson Green Fine Blue Jacket LLC that a two-hundred-point-eight-two-seven acre tract be annexed to the city of Belle Fountain, zoned M2 general manufacturing district. It is located north of the intersection of Township Road two-seventeen and US thirty-three, west of CCC and Saint Louis Railroad. This tract is currently zoned B1 and U1. The recommendation of the planning commission is to zone the property R1. Is there anybody here to speak on that particular request? If so, I'm sorry, sir, I know you, I know you know the routine. No, you're okay, you're okay. Just state your name and address, and you have, depending upon the number of folks here that are here to speak on that issue, try to be brief.
Kyle West, two-one-eight Noel Farm Land, Charlottesville, Virginia. First off, thank you all for hearing us tonight. This is a hearing on annexation, and unlike the previous, out, again, the six-thirty hearing, we will not be bringing any homes, we will not be bringing any people, we will not be bringing any burden to the city. Actually, exactly the opposite. We will be bringing tremendous amount of tax dollars to benefit the Belle Fountain Schools, the Logan County Schools, the Indians, Indian Lake School District. Over the term of our proposed project, again, this is only about annexation, but if we do end up doing what we would like to do, we're looking at it in excess of eleven million dollars to the area. And this, this annexation would be the first step in that. And that's all I have.
Scott Dow, Indian Lake, Ohio. Myself, my brother is
Scott, I'm sorry, you got to give me your address.
Okay, nine oh eight five McConner's Point Drive, Bell Center lot.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. My brother and I own the property. It is a depleted gravel pit. So we look at the property, we're bordering a railroad track, we're bordering a Highway thirty-three, and we're also bordering County Road, Torrey Road, and we're bordering one house. So we would like to see this property annexed into the city of Belle Fountain. We would possibly be looking at putting solar into the project, and this would be talked about at a different day, but right now, we're just needing to come into the city so that we have rules and regulations that we can follow and we can apply for the proper zoning at that time. So tonight, we're just addressing annexation, and my brother and I are both for this annexation and for the city of Belle Fountain to gain the tax value from the property. Thank you.
Anybody else here to address the issue of the six forty-five zoning request meeting or hearing, I should say? Last chance. With no one else approaching the lectern and no other comments about this particular issue, this will conclude the portion of the special hearing on the six forty-five meeting. We will break until seven-thirty, at which point we'll have our regular city council session. And as I stated earlier, if there are any members in the audience who didn't feel like they get to, got to express themselves for the six-thirty meeting, you're more than welcome to stay and address council during the comments from members of council portion of the meeting at seven-thirty, okay? So we'll stand in recess, and we'll see y'all back here at seven-thirty.
She was just in my office, she let us up.
I was like, what do you really count as that? Those kinds of things. Oh. I was like, oh, what do I think?
I, I wonder how
Always, always.
It felt like a lack of gratitude.
Yeah. We're just like She was delegating.
She was delegating. No. I think you're making sense. Yeah.
I think.
Right. Probably the baby.
I mean, every hour. So again, don't tell my leg and tell me it's ready. That isn't what you said. Yeah. But you know, they. First of all, they.
Cheers.
Just investigate.
Don't, don't.
Don't let me go down like that. I didn't know it all. I was not a nice person. I'm gonna tell you. You know, when I first. I think they're. For. Longer. Their tasks. Well, they have them that sound.
Oh, I can't go.
So later. I think I should text her on something. She really wants to go to. Good weekend. Yeah, we're really well.
This is, I guess you're right.
Yeah, she went to town. She brought that thing in with her parents. That big. I was like, so yeah, it's like this. How would you have to do it? We're fifteen. And we always hire sixteen first.
You go speak.
Well, we heard, we heard a lot of. Actually. Yeah. Probably right. Okay. I think, yeah. Oh, that's a different. No, I got the email. Oh.
Yeah.
My job. All right. All right. I think. Yeah, they're. They jam? It's, it's funny.
I knew.
Yeah. They were. We're short. I'm sorry. Why you talking? Oh, my. What? All the county owns that most. They chomped off his. There. Yeah. Sort of. Maybe there's. That's a good scene.
They were fine. I'm not.
This guy's got a. I'm just telling you.
I'm just telling you.
You still doing well?
It's an interesting situation.
Is that a course? Yeah, now.
You see their company is.
I like the.
Sometimes I worry about the tombers.
So this.
Very.
It's all.
It's made of. Yeah. But I'm.
So I have the other thing. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I know. Yeah, just here.
We'll.
I'm not sure. Actually, it's really. The Chinese got a little pitching. Yeah, well, eight fifteen one on Friday, two is a back to back. One run over two games. It was definitely. It was random. Like as soon as game started, he got a picture of a rainbow tree. So Kirby came from the Gulf or straight area to. Father and mom came to watch his grandson play. He has knee golf Tuesday at the charity. He goes, let me get these shots. It was on his walk. So they got home. And I left. I root a bill next year. I always got built. But that's. Response, some tough response. Because. It's kind of wild.
The bulletin.
Yes.
Yes, you don't have to.
Because I did.
Yes. Okay, you don't have to.
Probably have to go on. I don't know. I don't know. I heard. He ran for election. I actually.
How is race inappropriate? Did you withdraw your time with him? He's a little down. He just got.
Why not?
Yeah. Yeah.
It isn't thinking. That's the big thing. That's the benefit. Oh, yeah. There's. Motion. I think I do. I do remember.
The City Council's downstairs, please rise for the invocation by Councilman Ayler, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with each of us this evening as we conduct our city's business. May you guide our minds and our souls for the betterment of our community. We ask this in your name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Will the court please call the roll?
This is Baker.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
This is James.
Here.
Mr. Reeser.
Here.
Mr. Springs.
Here.
Mr. Ayler.
Here. Mr. Springs. Make a motion that we suspend the reading of the minutes, seconded by Mr. Ayler.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. David.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
This is James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to administrative reports, Mayor's office. Mayor Crisp.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. Just the last couple of weeks have been a fairly busy week, a couple of weeks for me. Uh, but in that, I got to speak to Rotary and, uh, the Kiwanis and explain a little bit about what's going on in the city with the Parks Department and, uh, our master plan. And, uh, big bonus for me, last Saturday, I was invited to speak at the Police Memorial at Brown Park. Uh, very good event. Just a time to honor the police officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And they remembered all of them that worked in the city and the county and read their names off of that also, though, pass naturally. That is my report.
Mr. Mayor, any comments or questions for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to Service Safety Director, Mr. Doss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Just a little brief update today. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, we're continuing to forge ahead on the master plan process. Uh, the first phase that we anticipate having a report, um, in June, which that, uh, is for the departmental, uh, tenure plans, but for operations and staffing. Then the second phase that's in progress is the, uh, like future land use plan, which will be later in the summer or fall. Um, and then, uh, a structured government, uh, study as well, uh, will be coming probably early summer. Uh, and then our next phase would be a facilities master plan that would take into account, um, those, those, uh, departmental plans. So, um, that's moving forward. Excited about that. Um, other than that, just, uh, continue to be busy with, uh, all the activity in town. And you've got, uh, multiple ordinances for adoption hype for our infrastructure projects for the year. So we'll get geared up for those as well. So just looking forward to continue to busy summer here. So with that in my report, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Doss, any comments or questions for Mr. Doss? Seeing none, we'll move to Law Director, Mr. Stahle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Um, one item, I didn't have a chance to attend Finance Committee that falls under my bailiwick, and that is, uh, ordinance twenty-five, twenty-eight regarding the prosecutor's office. Council approved, uh, just over a year ago, two part-time prosecutor positions to assist our full-time prosecutor, Crystal Welsh. Um, as we reported in the past, the prosecutor position is hard to fill with part-time staffing just because prosecutors are, uh, conflicted out from representing criminal defendants, people are likely to do so, sort of, if you want to do one or the other. Um, our two assistant prosecutors that we're filling in since both left the jurisdiction, one moved back to Kansas and one moved to, uh, to Columbus full-time. So what we're going to do here is we're going to reorganize it basically to hire, uh, on a per hour basis, just like they do when they appoint a visiting judge. And so they will not be part-time employees of this, of the city. It will simply be ten ninety-nine contractors that are sworn in to provide the services as, uh, a fill-in prosecutor. And that's only in the event when, uh, Ms. Welsh is on vacation or is unavailable. Uh, her and Judge Estes have worked very well together at the municipal court. It's been very efficient for the last year. So I'm excited to, to the way that that's operated, and I think this will fill that gap. So just wanted to share that with you and answer any questions if you have.
Mr. Stahle, any comments or questions for Mr. Stahle?
Thank you, sir. Um, and Mr. Brentlinger's absence, and to his credit, he's, this, he attends most, if not all, of our meetings. Um, his son, or excuse me, his grandson's graduating high school tonight, so he's not here tonight. So with that, we'll move to Police Chief, Chief Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, good evening, guests. Uh, just, um, first, I want to thank the mayor, uh, for, for speaking at our Police Memorial. I think you did an excellent job. Appreciate it, Mayor. The next, uh, we've obviously had some personnel issues lately, um, but we are still moving through the pos-, uh, processes for applicants in a positive direction. So, um, we have one of the gentlemen taking the next step of, of that, and he'll, he'll have us polygraph this Wednesday, tomorrow. Um, so he's moving through that process, which we're also moving through that sergeant's process. Two weeks from now, they will take the written test. Um, we have two vacancies there currently. Um, so two of the four sergeants applicants will be promoted from this process. After that, the precision that we just ordered, we got, believe it or not, a build date on it already, June ninth, it's supposed to be built. So we should, we should have it pretty quickly, um, believe it or not, after all the trouble we had with the others. Uh, and then lastly, on June third, we have our downtown, annual downtown, uh, business appreciation cookout where we set up on the Cordell Square there, cook all kinds of food for, for the downtown businesses, but anybody's welcome until we run out of food. Um, so if you're free and want lunch, lunch on us that day. Uh, it'll run from, uh, eleven AM to one PM. If you have any questions.
Chief, any comments or questions for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Fire Department, Chief Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Yes, council, amen. Uh, just, uh, a few little updates from a couple of weeks ago. So we, the two firefighters that were going to go to the academy, they, they went, they are there now. Uh, they started Friday, or I'm sorry, Monday, um, yesterday. Uh, so they have about eight to nine weeks ahead of them, uh, to get their level-two firefighters. And once they come out, then, uh, they will be, uh, level-two basics. So they just got done with their EMT class and then, like I said, currently in their firefighter class right now. So, uh, once they get out, we'll be able to get them moving. Um, then we just filled our last vacancy yesterday, so we swore in Noah Florrie. Uh, he comes to us from Urbana. Uh, so with him, that does put us at seven guys per shift, all of our vacancies filled. However, due to having a total of eight guys with, you know, someone like duty, uh, the two that are in school, the one we just hired, not yet top sports minimum, uh, we are still working with just five guys per shift right now, so we are at a minimum, uh, for the foreseeable future. So, uh, we are making do, so hopefully we can continue, uh, keeping ahead of the water there. Um, as far as the mock alert system or the station alert system, still no update yet on when the hardware's going to show up. Um, I think the last I spoke to you, they had just come in to do the site visit, uh, looking at where all the devices are going to go, the monitors and the horns and strobes and all that type of thing. So, um, I was told that that stuff should be coming in within the coming weeks and still nothing yet, so we're still waiting for that stuff to show up. So once that does get show, or once that does arrive, then we'll be able to get that stuff put in place. But then that, uh, things are as usual. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do see Ms. Stratton in the audience for utilities.
I have no.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stratton. Uh, and then right next to her, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just two things, really, a lot of things, but, uh, the two things for tonight are, um, we do have legislation in front of you this evening to, uh, appropriate some funds for our, um, Oakland Square, uh, project that we take place this summer. Uh, excited to do some new playground work, some concrete work there. And it really, the coolest part of that project is, it's about bringing the community together to make this thing happen. Uh, it's come out of the hard work, um, that we've worked with Honda and Wayon and the youth team for that. And it'll be an opportunity for youth and adults to come together to, uh, make and improve our community and work together. And it's really about building relationships. So really excited for that project this summer. And we're also in design right now for the Harmon Park project, uh, that we're hoping to get out today to hear about this summer. So lots of irons in the fire. Um, restroom project is cruise night along, hopefully have those done here in the next, uh, week or so. Uh, and just, just a lot of, uh, amazing things that are made possible, um, now that we've got funding to do it. So I'm excited for that.
Any questions for Mr. Myers? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't see Mr. Ballrath in the audience or Ms. Scottler. So that will conclude our reports from administration. We'll now move to reports from standing committees, and we'll start with Finance Committee, uh, Mr. Springs.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven items tonight. Um, as Mr. Doss mentioned, five of them will be up for adoption on improvement projects. For first reading, we have twenty-five, twenty-seven, and it is what Mr. Myers just spoke about. It's approximately two hundred thousand dollars paid from the Parks Fund for capital improvements over there. They are going to be asking to waive the three-reading rule and pass that on first and final tonight so they can get started on that. And then twenty-five, twenty-eight B is what Law Director Stahle, uh, touched on earlier, uh, where the new prosecutors, prosecutors will be ten ninety-nine contractors. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Springs. Rules Committee, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two resolutions up for adoption tonight, as well as one ordinance for first reading and one for second reading only. 2529 and 2530, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that both of these are for two different properties, but they both are just a resolution declaring our intention to provide services should we eventually annex those properties. These are not voting to annex those properties in tonight. One is the Levan investment, 46.376 acre property, and the other is the 143.138 acres, the Dietrich property. In addition to that, for first reading only, we have 2531. This is actually accepting the annexation application for the death property, the 228.27 acres, Alface Dockyard Road, that we heard about here in the hearing at 6:45. And then for second and final, excuse me, second reading only, we have 2526C. And that is the same principal use solar ordinance that we've been dealing with for quite some time now, trying to get in response to the Engineering Department and the Planning Commission, something in the code for them addressing solar while you're there. And my report.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Safe Committee, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. Utilities Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two ordinances on the agenda this evening. 2524, which is concerning sewer capacity fees, and 2525, which concerns water capacity fees. We're asking for a passage on second reading only this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Streets Committee, Mr. Ayler.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Sidewalks, Curbs and Parks Committee, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. And then finally, Audit Committee, Mrs. Baker.
No report, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. That concludes reports of standing committees. We'll now move to the portion of our meeting where we welcome communications from citizens. If there are any citizens in the audience who seek to address council, please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the chair will recognize you to speak for up to five minutes.
I have another, I'm Terry Dolan, 1156 Michigan Street. I have another concern.
Just a second, Mr. Dolan, sorry. I'll give you your time. 1156 Michigan Street. Go ahead, sir.
So I have another concern with the R1 distancing of that. I thought I heard something about PUD in there, and if it's my understanding is correct, that allows them to come back at some point in time and change from R1 and maybe put in condos or anything? If that's the case, I oppose that. And I'd like to, like to see if, if that is the case, can we put a limitation on that of five to 10 years before they can come back in and backdoor that? Because that just sounds like they're trying to pacify the people. I don't think that's the right thing to do. The second thing is concerning the same issue, is the exits from the housing development they're proposing. So to alleviate some of that traffic from Michigan Street, which we're going to be adding to from the south anyway, is to put two exits, one on Lake and maybe one out Ludlow. So that's my proposal, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Dolan.
Senior, 3743 Logan Route, Delphine, Ohio. So talking about annexing properties into the city, and mainly, I'm supporting the one on the north edge of Delphine. I believe it was 143 acres, maybe it was more, I'm not sure. But, but specifically to that, I, I grew up in Logan County on a dairy farm, and I know the value of the property and farmland and all that, that we've all heard when discussing annexations and solar and all that. But I also know the importance of growth as a community and the values that it can bring to us. We've seen numerous housing develops going up around Logan County. So that shows me we are growing as a community, and we are missing out on potential monies if we do not continue to grow the city limits along with those developments. If we have an opportunity where the landowner wants us to annex the property into the city, and we know the future possibilities that that property can bring, then why would we not want to annex the property yet? I'm referring to the property owned by Scott and Dave Duff. I trust Scott to do what is best with his property for the community, because he has an excellent track record in showing us he supports the community, and he does a lot for the community. So I, I trust him when he makes decisions like that with his property, and I would hope that he would too.
Anybody else seek to address council?
Sean Stevens, 1601 Raymond Avenue.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
Been a little over a month since we had the flooding on White Pines, Raymond Avenue, and I know there's been a lot of talk, a lot of people out looking at retention ponds, you know, various aspects of the stormwater drainage. And I didn't hear anything today. I'm wondering, has there been any plans yet formalized as far as going forward, other than the obvious of cleaning out the ponds and, you know, making sure that the outflows are clear?
Mr. Stevens, I don't have any answer to that question. I defer to Wes, or if you want to.
Sure. So I guess to answer your question, there's been no defendant plan yet, as I think I've communicated to you, it's still raining, so it's not quite dry enough yet to get in there and do some more work. My own fish office is working on a plan for what we need to do as far as perhaps taking some silt that's built up in those ponds over the years out to increase the capacity. So we're still working on exactly what that looks like, but again, the weather is preventing us from doing anything additional right now, but, you know.
Anything on engineering?
I defer to Mr. Bischoff, the way his office has done so far. Again, I think, I think to start with, we're definitely going to try and dip some of that silt out and see how that works. It'll kind of be a phased approach. I mean, I understand that you're concerned about the issues, as we are too, and, you know, it's going to, it's going to take some trial and error a little bit as well, so.
No, I understand that. Just also understanding, you know, it's, there's been trial, there's been error quite a few different times.
Well, I did talk to a resident just yesterday who lives on Raymond, and I asked if there's any issue with the last rains that we had, and they reported none. So I would ask you, did you have any issue with this last rain that we had?
We haven't had a rain event significant enough to cause a problem, until we did. And once we have a problem, you have to understand that that's a one-and-done. When it comes through, if somebody floods, that's it, it's all it takes is one. And quite honestly, I've never really seen a retention pond built in the middle of a neighborhood. And I know that wasn't the intention with the, with the retention ponds. That, that wasn't the original plan. They were on the outskirts of the existing neighborhood. Neighborhood was built around it. I still can't help but feel it's not the ideal situation by any means. And then when you go out there and you look at the way it's set up, talk specifically to the outflow. The catch basin for the outflow from that pond is choked off. It's nowhere near the capacity it needs to be to support the water flow that should be going into it. So there's a lot of things that can be looked at, a lot of things that can be done. We talked about the, the increasing the swell for in emergencies to go away was one of the options that were being, that was suggested. So there's several things that have been talked about, several things that's been suggested. I'm wondering at what point will we have some definitive idea of a go-forward beyond just, and don't, don't get me wrong, cleaning out the ponds is important. Maintaining the various outflows important. For instance, the out, the, the culvert at White, at White Pines Drive over on 179, that was cleaned out recently. Thank you. That made a big difference. That should help keep the water off of White Pines that's flowing down 179. But there's things that can be, and I respectfully believe should be done from an engineering perspective, beyond just simple cleanup. So my hope is that, you know, we'll get some feedback here relatively soon before, you know, something unfortunate happens again.
Scott, 9085 Conners Point Drive, Belton, Ohio. My brother and I own the property that we're talking about annexing into the city of Belton on 6833. We've been in front of the county commissioners, Logan County, presented the annexation to them. We got their vote of approval and of the application, so we're here delighted to ask for the city's application. Whether it becomes a solar field, a data center, an AI center, we are exposed to all these things coming our way from Columbus. Right now, I'm providing concrete for a lot of these data centers. There's a new company from Spain that's going to be putting a precast panels out on Dave Link's property on 32. I've talked to them, and they said our property is prime for these warehouses. So what I'm asking tonight is just for the annexation. We will present solar at some time, but not tonight, but we are, we are asking for this. And if this will bring not people, if this will bring jobs and will also bring a lot of tax money in for the city of Belton and also for Andy Lake. I saw last night's paper that the city treasurer of the school thinks that they may be $500,000 or $600,000 deficit for next year. This will bring that kind of money to give to the schools. This is something you could vote in and have in your community and not, not tax the property owners on, on a new school letting. So I'm hoping for your support tonight. We will be back to present different ideas to you, but we're, we're wanting to, to bring this in as a commercial property. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who seek to address council? Seeing none, that will conclude the portion of our meeting reserved for communications from citizens. We'll now move to our legislative agenda with ordinances and resolutions for first reading.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director and/or Parks Superintendent to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Oakland Square Park project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to waive the three-reading rule. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first and final. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance establishing and providing for compensation for municipal court prosecutor coverage and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on first reading only. Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
A resolution by the Council of the City of Belton, Ohio, declaring its intention to provide services to certain territory to be annexed to the city of Belton, Ohio, containing 46.376 acres in Lake Township of Logan County, Ohio, and said land owned by Levine Investments LLC and adjacent to the city of Belton, Ohio.
Mrs. James.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
A resolution by the Council of the City of Belton, Ohio, declaring its intention to provide services to certain territory to be annexed to the city of Belton, Ohio, containing 143.138 acres in Harrison Township of Logan County, Ohio, and said land owned by Andrew G. Dietrich and Barbara Dietrich and adjacent to the city of Belton, Ohio.
Mrs. James.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance accepting application for annexation of certain territory real estate to the city of Belton, Ohio, containing 208.27 acres owned by Delphore Incorporated, located in Lake Township adjacent to the city of Belton, Ohio, establishing zoning classification, therefore, and amending the zoning map.
Mrs. James.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Davis.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
No.
Mr. Ayler.
No.
That concludes the ordinances and resolutions for first reading. We'll now move to ordinances for second reading.
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 925 sewers of the codified ordinances of the city of Belton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Davis.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 923 water of the codified ordinances of the city of Belton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Davis.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Seconded by Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance approving and adopting planning and zoning regulations regarding solar energy systems for the city of Belton to be codified as Chapter 1166 of the codified ordinances of said city.
Mrs. James.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Davis.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
No.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
No.
Mr. Ayler.
No.
That concludes our ordinances for second reading. We'll now move to ordinances for third reading.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Harding Street Waterline Improvements Project 2024-04W and declaring an emergency.
Springs, motion to adopt. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Malone Avenue Waterline Improvements Project 2024-03W and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mr. Ayler.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the 2025 street painting, painting and striping project number 2025-2S and declaring an emergency in the city of Belton, Ohio.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mr. Ayler.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract with the selected contractor and/or bidders for the Columbus Avenue and Powell Avenue Storm Improvement Project number 2025-2SD and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to seek proposals and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract with the selected contractor and/or bidders for the 2025 citywide street resurfacing project number 2025-01R and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ayler.